Thank you. Please be seated. Call the council meeting to order. We have proclamations. The first proclamation is for, oh, first a motion to reconvene.
No moves.
All those in favor, opposed, and carried. And we have proclamations. The first one is Daffodil Month, and I think that's Counselor McDoel.
Thank you, your worship, and from the office of the Mayor of the City of Burnaby, proclamation, Daffodil Month. Whereas the Canadian Cancer Society, British Columbia and Yukon Division continues to be a leader in fundraising, outstanding cancer research, undertaking cancer prevention initiatives, and delivering support services to people with cancer and their families. And whereas the Canadian Cancer Society, British Columbia and Yukon Division consistently demonstrates a collaborative approach to cancer control and represents the interest of all citizens of Burnaby affected by cancer. And whereas the Canadian Cancer Society, British Columbia and Yukon Division assists the public in taking steps to reduce the risk of cancer by adopting prevention strategies and advocates for healthy public policies that make for healthier choice, easier choices. Now, therefore, Derek R. Corrigan, Mayor of Burnaby, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2016 as Daffodil Month in the City of Burnaby.
Thank you very much, Counselor McDoel. The next proclamation is going to be read by Counselor Volco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a proclamation for International Day for the Elimination of Racial Discrimination. Whereas the City of Burnaby is committed to the belief that equal opportunity and treatment should exist for all people. And whereas every resident of Burnaby has the right to realize their potential regardless of race, national or ethnic origin, and to live at all times in conditions of dignity, respect, and peace. And whereas racial discrimination is a universal issue that divides communities and threatens the political, social, economic, and cultural foundations on which cities are built. And whereas the City of Burnaby is a signatory municipality of the Canadian Coalition of Municipalities Against Racism and Discrimination. And whereas the General Assembly of the United Nations has designated March 21st as the International Day for the Elimination of Racial Discrimination. And whereas the elimination of racism and racial discrimination can be accomplished through understanding and respect for the dignity of all people and is a social and moral responsibility of each person. Now, therefore, Derek R. Corrigan, Mayor of Burnaby, does hereby proclaim March 21st, 2016, as the International Day for the Elimination of Racial Discrimination in the City of Burnaby.
Thank you very much, Counselor Volco. The next proclamation is to be read by Counselor King.
Thank you, your worship. From the office of the Mayor of the City of Burnaby, proclamation, Purple Day. Whereas Purple Day is an annual global awareness day for epilepsy. And whereas epilepsy affects nearly 300,000 people in Canada, 3 million people in the United States, and over 50 million people worldwide. And whereas these statistics exceed those stricken with multiple sclerosis, cerebral palsy, muscular dystrophy, and Parkinson's disease combined. And whereas many people living with epilepsy still face barriers due to a lack of awareness about the disorder. And whereas public misconception all too often creates stigma and social isolation, which has a devastating effect on the self-esteem of children who have epilepsy. And whereas Purple Day raises awareness of epilepsy and supports those affected by the disorder. Now, therefore, Derek R. Corrigan, Mayor of Burnaby, do hereby proclaim March 26, 2016, as Purple Day in the City of Burnaby.
Thank you very much, Counselor King. And I have with me a framed proclamation. And I'm going to come down and I'm going to present this to Melody. Melody, there you are. Melody's here. And I think also Lori is here. And Harmony? There we go. So I'm going to come down and I'm going to make this presentation to Melody. And I think there's going to be a photo op. So I'll come down there. And Melody, I want to thank you particularly for being with us tonight. As you can see, I'm wearing my purple shirt. And we are very much appreciate you coming out to be able to accept this proclamation for us. And I hope this is a very successful Purple Day and that it's continuing year-round because defeating epilepsy is around the corner. We know it is. We know the research is very, very close to making this happen. And it's going to be that last push. And that will come from citizens who are contributing to research on epilepsy, to be able to make a cure for this disease a reality. So we're with you and in your corner. And we hope by these small gestures, we're able to show that citizens across our city support those who have epilepsy and in the fight to find a cure. So thank you very much. All right. And our final proclamation is going to be read by Counselor Calendino.
Thank you, your worship. And this proclamation is on World Down Syndrome Day. Whereas World Down Syndrome Day is a global awareness day which has been officially observed by the United Nations since 2012. And whereas one in every 700 babies born in Canada today has Down Syndrome. And whereas there are currently over 40,000 Canadian citizens who have Down Syndrome. And whereas individuals with Down Syndrome have tremendous potential to live full and fulfilling lives as contributing members of the community. And whereas the City of Burnaby values our citizens with Down Syndrome and their families. Now, therefore, Derek Corrigan, Mayor of Burnaby, does hereby proclaim March 21st, 2016, as World Down Syndrome Day in the City of Burnaby.
Thank you, Counselor Calendino. And as council knows, the Down Syndrome Research Facility is right here in the City of Burnaby. And we're very proud that we have that organization as part of our community. All right. And with that, a motion to adopt the minutes of the open council meeting held on March the 7th, 2016. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. And now, council, if you would, because we have an item on our reports later on that is going to require the approval of a bylaw, is that I'm asking for a motion to vary the order of the agenda and to have the bylaw readings considered at this time. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. And the bylaws, I think, are being read by Counselor Wang. Is that right?
Yeah.
Counselor Wang, please.
Yeah, bylaws. Item A, first, second, and third reading. I move that bylaw, item 13583, be now introduced and read three times.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, opposed, and carried.
Item B, reconsideration and final adoption. I move that bylaw, number 13580, number 13581, and number 13582, be now reconsidered and finally adopted, signed by the mayor and clerk and the corporate seal affixed thereto.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Thank you very much, Counselor Wang. A motion resolved into a committee of the whole to consider reports. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, and carried. The first report is a certificate of sufficiency from the city clerk. And this is for receipt of the report and forwarding to the petitioners. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Next report is from the Traffic Safety Committee, Counselor McDoel.
Thank you, your worship. The recommendations are that council approve the installation of an overhead illuminated crosswalk signs at the intersection of Parker Street and Madison Avenue as detailed in this report. And two, that a copy of this report be sent to Mr. Warren Dolly, 7035 Union Street, Burnaby. I so move.
Moved and seconded.
The, this, Parker is a major collector. And even though it's fairly wide open in the evenings, especially in the winter months, it's dark. And there's a lot of traffic on that road during the rush hour. So when the committee looked at it and looked at the different options, we just thought that the overhead lights would illuminate the crosswalk better. And hopefully, it would get the cars to slow down because there's incidents there where the cars don't slow down even when people are trying to step into the crosswalk. And like I said, it is a busy, not all the time, but during eastbound traffic during rush hour, it comes through there pretty quick at times, especially in the winter months when it's dark very early. There's a lot of seniors in that area. A lot of people use that area to cross going to or from Hastings Streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jordan.
Everything just went, well, black. Oh, but the red light came on, so that's all right. Thank you.
You broke the machine.
Oh, thank you. I support the committee's recommendation. But I can tell you honestly, from when I was on the Traffic Safety Committee and still to this day, I'm not a huge fan of those overhead crosswalk light things. Because I see them around the city. And I just don't think they get enough respect from the motorists. I guess it's a nice way to frame it, that I go almost every day down Dover. And there's the Marlborough School Crossing there, which is actually pedestrian-activated where you push the button and the overhead little figures light up. And people just go through there at like, you know, 80 kilometers an hour and they don't even slow down. And that's pedestrian-activated, let alone just one that's hanging. But I have seen in some neighboring cities that they have sort of more flashy things and stuff attached to the lights to draw attention to people and some stuff. I think I've seen in New West that they have ones that have sort of yellow flashing things. So just, you know, something more than just the stick figures hanging over the middle of the crosswalk to draw attention to the fact that you need to pay attention here. So hopefully, when we're searching out to purchase one of these for that area, that we can maybe look at some of the newer versions that are on the market and that have a little more attention-grabbing features to them so that the drivers will see, especially in dark, you know, nights like, and rainy nights like we have here, that that is a crosswalk and they need to slow their vehicles.
Thank you. And maybe Counselor McDoel, your committee can look at what are the best practices. Counselor Calendino.
Yes, thank you, your worship. I think I tend to agree very much with the comments made by Counselor Jordan. It may be true that the drivers usually take for granted something that's not flashing, really, to attract their attention. And I have seen those yellow flashers just before the light or the intersection to, on the sidewalk side of the road to get attention. And if those could be combined, it could be a good solution for the problem. But the reason that the committee went along with this recommendation, it's because it's not just a pedestrian crosswalk, but there's a lot of schoolchildren. And obviously, for safety reasons of schoolchildren as well as seniors, a high-traffic street, we decided that it would be better than nothing having the overhead lights, at least in the winter, in dark days, people can see any pedestrians trying to cross that street.
Great. Thank you. Are you ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Moving on to the city manager's report. Item one. This is a five-story mixed-use development in the Hastings Street area plan. And this is authorization to forward to a public hearing on April the 26th, 2016. All right. Question's been called. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Item two. This is a townhouse development with underground parking in the Edmonds Town Center, subarea two. And this is authorization to forward to a public hearing on April the 26th. Question's been called. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Item three. This is the installation of a rooftop antenna facility. And this is authorization to forward to a public hearing on April the 26th, 2016. Counselor Calendino.
Thank you, your worship, through you to staff. I thought that at this location, we had had a previous application for a standalone, I don't know what they're, monopole antennas and that lot there. Is this replacing that or is this an additional one?
Mr. Pelche.
Your worship, there was an earlier application, but it's actually across the street. And it's for, it's called, it's a temporary antenna facility that went in when the buildings were demolished. It has a limited lifespan under the zoning. And this will replace the temporary facility that's across the street.
The previous application was not for the, what used to be the Talis property?
Yes, it was.
On the southwest corner.
Right. That was a, the straight across Bean Bridge to the west?
Right.
Was an application by Talis for a temporary antenna. Well, this one was going through the rezoning process.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
Is there anything else? You ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Item four. This is an apartment tower and low-rise development in the South Gate neighborhood, Edmonds Town Center. And this is authorization to forward to a public hearing on April the 26th, 2016. This is one of the first of the South Gate neighborhood applications coming forward. Oh, Counselor Volco.
Yeah, just quickly, because this is the first one coming through. I'd be intrigued to see the public hearing in regards to this. But I've asked this before, and maybe I can just, just to have it on the record. Under 3.8 on page 53, there's a, right at the bottom, one of the prerequisites. There are 219 covenant restricting the use of guest suites. I think I've, if I recall way back when, the answer. But with the issue of Airbnbs and that just becoming more and more prevalent all over the place, this, I don't think relates to that issue, does it? And so what exactly is this? The guest suite is?
Mr. Pelche.
Yeah, just an explanation for me.
The guest suite is residential accommodation in the development that's owned and operated by the Strata for the benefit of the Strata members. So if you have family from out of town that's visiting and you need a suite for them to stay in because you have a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom apartment, they could book that suite through the Strata to use it.
And so the, just for my benefit, I guess, the issue of the Airbnb is another issue that's related to the Strata that would then have to set up as they set up their restrictions or what they're prepared to accept within the Strata. And that, they would be the ones to address the issue of an Airbnb or something similar.
From a city view, we're seeing this as an amenity for the residents in the building, not amenity to be used for other business purpose out of that development.
Thank you.
Counselor Calendino.
Thank you, your worship. Just again, from staff, wondered how much monitoring we do of that, or whether the Strata Council may decide to rent it permanently for revenue to keep the Strata fees at a lower rate over the years. Do we, it's a covenant that they should not stray from what the covenant says. But I know at least one Strata Council uses it permanently as a rental.
Mr. Pelche.
Yeah, we, in most cases like this, we do respond on complaint. So we're not actively going to Stratas each year, each month, asking for a report on the use of it. But if there's a complaint received on its use, then we would follow up and enforcement to the covenant.
Thank you.
Covenant would cover that kind of an issue, though. Yes. All right. Counselor Johnson.
Thank you. I just have a question, again, relating to the Section 219 covenant, more specifically to the electrical charging stations. Are those intended for visitor use or Strata member use, or a bit of both?
Pelche.
I'd have to look at the details for this application, but they're typically both. So we typically provide them in the visitor parking area as well as the resident parking area.
And I'm assuming there's a meter on those for?
Each Strata would decide on how they wanted to operate them, whether they incorporated into their Strata fee or whether they charged a person to use the meter.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Counselor Jordan.
Thank you, worship. I just wanted to indicate that it's certainly supporting this proposal. And there's two others following tonight. So I am excited to see this finally getting to the stage where we've got public hearing for an actual building rather than the pre-consultation and the master plan and all the work that's been put into this. And I know our staff have, and the developer, the community committees of council have spent tons of hours and tons of time getting to this, to this stage. And I think it's pretty exciting for the neighborhood and for the city to finally get to the point where we are going to public hearing on an actual building. And I look forward to, you know, hearing the feedback from the community at that time. And just quite excited about the project altogether.
You're probably only half as excited as the banker for the developer is.
Five years, six years? Five years.
Ready for the question?
Five years.
All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Item five. This is again, a, an application, but this time for a non-market, low-rise development in the South Gate neighborhood, in the Edmonds Town Center. And this is authorization to forward to a public hearing on April the 26th. Counselor McDoel.
Thank you, your worship. The Cedar Cottage Place is across the street or past their life expectancy. And it's been developing into a slum area. So with the developer building these 90 units here, we'll clean that area up because that'll be redeveloped. And there'll be some more seniors housing over there. But I think it's a win-win for the neighborhood. I moved there 26 years ago. And I've watched it slowly go downhill over the years. The provincial government is getting out of the housing and selling off all their projects and land and everything and stuff. And I'm glad that the developer was able to bring this one on site here, that we know it'll be built properly and it'll be long-lasting. And it'll clean up, be a first step on the revitalization of that whole area down there because it's been sort of neglected for a while. But now it's really starting to develop. And I think you'll see more in the future. I'm looking forward to it. Not as much as the developers. I know there's a couple in the audience, and they had a lot more hair four and a half years ago when they first came in here. But tonight's the night that, anyway, they're on this step with all three of these coming forward. And I'm really looking forward to it, as well as the neighborhood. I keep getting questions, when is that going to start? When is it going to start? Unfortunately, these big projects, I guess, do take a lot of time and a lot of staff time, a lot of time for the developers and everybody else to bring it forward. But I think at the end of the day, there's going to be a project there that'll be one of the best in the city when we see it all. And I especially like the idea of daylighting the creek. Years ago, we thought it was prudent to build culverts and build, close in the ditches and creeks and that. Now we're bringing it back. And I think of this one, I think of San Antonio is one of my favorite cities in the states, is to go down to the Riverwalk down there because it is an area, especially when this is completely built out. The number of people there with the green spaces there, with the creek and the bridges and the island and that will be a real drawing card. But it'll be also good for that neighborhood when you get all them towers built. And the people there, it'll be a real community, self-contained community right there. And I'm really looking forward to the shovel going in the ground on this first one. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm particularly happy. And I know the residents of Cedar Place will be very excited to see this product, this project beginning. As you've said, the wood-story buildings that were developed for social housing in that area have a life expectancy. And they get to the point where even with the provincial government trying to keep up maintenance, it becomes impossible to be able to maintain those buildings in a good state of repair. And so this is going to create another brand-new housing unit that will allow people to stay in their residences and then move to new housing. And then the housing that's on that property will later be replaced with another 90 units of social housing for seniors. This has been a very difficult one for us all to bring home, working with BC Housing and with the developer. But I think our staff have done an excellent job of ensuring that not only are we getting 90 new units of housing for people who already live in this community, but 90 more units of housing for other people in Burnaby that need that housing, particularly seniors. So it's a great project and one that I think is delivering on all fronts. You ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Item six. And this is an apartment tower and low-rise development in the South Gate neighborhood. And this is authorization to forward to a public hearing on April 26th, 2016. Questions called. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Item seven. This is another townhouse development with underground parking in the Edmonds Town Center area, subarea one. And this is authorization to forward to a public hearing on April 26th. Questions called. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. We have next the building permit tabulation report, number two. And as you know, this reflects construction activity as determined by the building permits issued during that period. Questions called. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Item nine. This is to request council bring forward a bylaw to appropriate $444,860 from capital reserves to finance six projects in parks, recreation, and cultural services. Questions called. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Item 10. This is in regard to the treasury management system. And this is council approval to award a contract to the Admore Group Incorporated for the implementation of a treasury management system for the city. Questions called. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Number 11. This is to obtain council approval to award a construction contract for the testing and grouting of sanitary sewer mainline. This is the Gilpin Grand Sewer Main Line. Ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, carried. Item 12. This is to obtain council approval to increase the existing contract for the Caribou Road and Stormont Avenue project. Questions called. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Item 13. This is to obtain council approval to award a construction contract for roadwork and water mains on Edmund Street, south of Kingsway. Questions called. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Item 14. This is to obtain council approval to award a construction contract for the 2016 sewer separation project on the lane north of Venable Street. Questions called. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Item 15 is retirements. And the retirements, we have our Mr. Scott Wren retired from the city after 36 years of service in the Burnaby Fire Department. And he held the position of Assistant Fire Chief. Mr. Mike Stifson, Mike Stifson retired from employment with the city in July of 2015 after 35 years of service. years of service in the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Services Department. Mr. Brian Collins retired from employment with the city in July after thirty-four years of service in the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Services Department. Mr. Rick Deal, he retired from employment with the city after thirty-four years of service. He was working in the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Services Department. Mr. Terry Bingley, he retired from the employment with the city Fire Department after twenty-nine years of service. He retired with the position of Fire Captain. Mr. Mike McKay retired from the city after twenty-nine years of service, and he was working in the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Services Department. Ms. Betty Adkin retired from employment with the city after twenty-nine years of service. She was working in the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Services Department in, as a clerk type of three. Mr. Maurice Schmidt retired from the city after nine years of service. He was in Information Services and held the position of Deputy Director of IT Business Solutions. Mr. Rick Hurerti, Kirceti, I think it is, Kirceti, did I get that right? Kirceti. Kirceti. Retired from employment with the city on August of 2015 after thirty-eight years of service. He was working in the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Services Department. Mr. Larry LeBlanc retired from employment with the city after thirty-six years of service, and he was in the Engineering Department as an Engineering Inspector. Mr. Dale Daniels retired from employment with the city after thirty-five years of service, and he was working in the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Services. Mr. Carter McNeil retired from employment with the city after twenty-six years of service. He was working in the Engineering Department. Ms. Janet Lucas retired from service with the city after eleven years of service. She was in the RCMP as a Police Accounts Clerk. In September, Mr. Sid Cleve retired from his work with the city after thirty-six years of service. He commenced service in the Finance Department but ended with the position of Deputy City Clerk. Mr. Darcy O'Shea retired from the City of Burnaby Fire Department after thirty-five years of service, and he held the position of Assistant Fire Chief. Ms. Janine Matheson retired after twenty-eight years of service, and she was working with the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Services Department. Tremendous group of employees who have had very lengthy service in the City of Burnaby. I want to congratulate all of them on their retirement, and I hope that they have a healthy, happy, and long retirement. All right, you ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Moving on to new business. Counselor Johnson?
Your Worship, there's a letter in our Purple Pages this evening from NAOP, and it's regarding a survey of Lower Mainland municipal fees for development. And I think it shows some pretty good news for Burnaby. We have the second lowest development cost charges excluding Metro Vancouver. Only the City of Maple Ridge beats us on the low end. You hear a lot of discussion from the premier and others that municipalities are driving up the cost of housing in British Columbia. Well, we've got one of the lowest, one of the lowest costs per unit in the Lower Mainland region, so I just wanted to be that, wanted the public to be aware of that. I would actually like to refer this to the Finance Committee.
All right. It's been moved to refer it to the Finance Committee. Second it, please.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Counselor Valco?
Thank you, Your Worship. In the Purple Pages on Item G, page ten, there's a letter from a Margaret Stevens on Gray Avenue in regards to, and I noticed that it's been referred to the Finance, Financial Management Committee for this coming Wednesday. I just wanted to perhaps encourage the committee at its meeting to perhaps try to address the issue that Ms. Stevens writes here, and we've heard this many times from, in particular, longtime residents of Burnaby now, especially with what's occurring in the housing market in Metro Vancouver, but in specifically her, she writes where she had applied to appeal her assessment, but there was no chance of winning her assessment, but she was encouraged to defer the taxes on the property, and she says, but this is not something we want to do. I understand the sentiment, but I know that a while back, under our former Director of Finance, there was a letter from an accountant or a piece came in from an accountant talking about this very issue of deferring taxes and what a benefit it really is in situations such as Ms. Stevens. I understand the sentiment where people don't want, believe that they're leaving an onerous burden and a loan on their children or whoever may inherit the property, but I think if there's a way that the Financial Management Committee and the city somehow can convince people such as Ms. Stevens that are in situations like this, that really the deferral of their taxes is a good thing to do, especially in a situation like this. I mean, back in the day when Ms. Stevens' property was maybe worth a hundred and fifty thousand, that may not have been a practical situation, but now when you're looking at your property being worth one point five to two million, who knows? Numbers are just pulled out of the air nowadays in this market, that really if you're deferring thirty-five hundred or fifty-five hundred dollars in taxes, I think it's a prudent and a wise thing to do. So if there's somehow, we as a city through our committee and that can somehow address this issue or get the message out to folks that this is not as onerous or, how do you put it? You're not leaving a burden or a debt behind for whoever's inheriting your property. I think it'd be a good thing.
I can appreciate that we want to make clear to people that that option is available, but, you know, it's very difficult to persuade people whose first obligation in their life was to pay their mortgage and to eventually have their home debt-free, to convince them that they should acquire debt in order to look after taxes as a result of assessments having gone up over an extended period of time, and in many cases, the loss of their homeowner grant, which I think, you know, we will be addressing as far as citizens in our community are concerned and the actions that could be taken by the provincial government. But it is very difficult to convince people who, in many cases, have been working people all their lives to start acquiring debt on their property, and I don't know how far, Counselor Valco, we can go in encouraging people to do that, given their disposition and their own personal philosophy in that regard. I think one of the ways we can help them is by fighting what are unfair assessments in our cities and also by being very careful about our taxes and ensuring that our taxes don't go up any more than is necessary.
I wanted to, I wanted to mention or just point out, Your Worship, in regards to your comments on assessments, once upon a time when assessments gradually went up, that may have been a fair comment, but if you take a look in Ms. Stevens' case, as she says, the increased value of our property on the assessment from 2014 to 15 increased by thirty-five point six percent in one year. I know what that feels like because I think that's the exact number that mine went up. So anyways, as I say, you know, she closes with urging us to continue lobbying the government to stop this madness, but I don't know what you do, but anyways.
All right, Counselor Jordan?
Yes, Your Worship, just, Counselor Valco, we've had many letters like this come in, either through the mayor's office or to the departments of the city, and the staff have worked with the committee, myself in particular, and we have sort of a draft letter to go out to, explaining to people all of their options, because one of the things that's available is that, is that if people have a low income, basically people who are on a fixed pension, that they can actually apply to get the homeowner grant, so they don't have to defer. So there's, and if they're a veteran and if they have a disability, et cetera, et cetera. So there's a whole bunch of options available that do not get widely advertised, even putting aside, you know, all of the other issues around this. There are some options that people don't actually really know about and are not well-publicized, and we're, so anyone that does write us a letter like this is getting a copy of this, sort of a fact sheet about assessments and what you're entitled to for homeowners grants, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm glad to have worked on that, so this person will be getting that letter and perhaps some additional information.
Thank you. And maybe we need to look at doing a little more to get that information out and ensuring that it's broadly distributed to people so they understand their rights in regard to homeowner grants, because I don't think the province does a good job of explaining it.
If you have an income, net income of thirty-two thousand dollars or less, which a lot of people who only receive Canada Pension and OAP would qualify under, you can file a claim, not through the city, but directly to the province, and get your homeowner's grant, even if it's been eliminated through the taxation system that's available now, so.
Those are good things for people to know. All right, and I have a motion that I wanted to get a mover for, and that is that Counselor Dollywall be authorized to attend the FCM Board of Directors meetings as an elected member of the board, and that related expenses be paid.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded.
Do you mean if I would complete non-therapy?
That's right, is that he might try to get, he might try to get off the board. Right, are you?
Only if it's a one-weeker.
(laughing).
He takes that much?
All those in favor, opposed, and carried. All right, he's still going to the FCM.
Move it to the chair.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Thank you, everyone who was with us tonight. Thank you, council and staff.